Have the invitation. Flag, solidify, please.
Yeah, I'm going to pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. The first item on the agenda is approval of the minutes. Agenda, I'm sorry. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion. A move that we approve the agenda as presented.
All in favor? Second is. Item is TX twenty-three point zero-nine point zero-two. Staff requests the text amendment to add sign regulations for removing or replacing signs due to eminent domain in Article seventeen point four.
All right, hello, planning board.
Mr. Max.
Yes. So this is an item that's was at the previous planning board meeting, but since we didn't have a quorum, I'm bringing it back to this meeting. It's so TX twenty-three zero-nine zero-two for eminent domain signage. So staff, we were researching and we've got a lot of different signage that doesn't quite meet our ordinance. So we've drafted a text amendment to amend the sign regulations when they're removing or replacing signs due to eminent domain. So what that means is if governments like NCDOT or the town of Stallings takes over private property, we will give them just compensation. So that's what eminent domain means. Seventeen point four dash one is the same language that's already in seventeen point four. I just put a dash one and then added a dash two. So anything in red, I'm going to kind of summarize. When a lawful sign is removed or displaced through eminent domain, so eminent domains only, the sign may be replaced at a location on the site under the following standards. So A, if the sign can be replaced in a location that complies with all existing regulations, no additional regulations apply. B, if a sign cannot be replaced on site in compliance with all existing regulations, then myself, the development administrator, may approve a sign under the following three items. One, as long as it does not exceed the height or square footage of the removed or displaced sign. And I'll zoom in a little bit now, it's a little bit small for me to read actually too. Number two, making sure it's reasonably located so that it ensures traffic safety and compliance with all regulations and it doesn't block any other signs and adjacent parcels. And three, it may or may not comply with setbacks. So for clarity, myself, the development administrator, at my sole discretion, may reduce or modify setbacks. So what all this means is that if a sign is being taken due to eminent domain, like road widening, we have NCDOT over here doing the widening, we have the P three, taking, they're about to take a bunch of signs away. And this is why we have this. They can work with me and not have to go through any other amendment process to get a new sign in place. And they can put a new sign that either doesn't meet our regulations, but I have the determination to make sure it can fit the regulations or not. So staff recommends approval due to displacement of signs due to a lot of the road widening projects that are going on in town. And it really helps the property owners out and it maintains the health, safety and appearance of the community. Do you have any questions?
Questions?
I move that we approve the request as presented.
Second? I second.
All in favor, I guess.
All in favor.
Okay, great. And then the next would be the statement of consistency.
That's three.
Sorry?
One had the motion.
So for example, you could say, I make, I find, I make the motion that we recommend the statement of consistency for TX twenty-three zero-nine zero-two sign regulations because it maintains the health and safety and appearance of the community. You can say that, or you could just say as I move whatever the max. You can say that.
Now you know why I didn't want to do it.
If you want to read it like that, or you could just say I move.
I move that we find it reasonable. As presented.
Okay.
All in favor?
We need a second, okay. Great. All right, well, thank you. All right. So if you want to read the.
Item three, TX twenty-three point zero-nine point zero-three. Staff requests text amendment to add vested rights extension for conditional zoning, CZ, in Article five point four dash three I.
Yeah, thank you. So this is another leftover text amendment from last meeting. So we've had a lot of conditional zonings lose their vested rights. So meaning they haven't touched the ground, they haven't applied for permits, they haven't done any significant work. So they have not invested. Then their two years lapses and they have to go through either a zoning vested rights approval process or another brand-new conditional zoning, or it reverts back to their original zoning designation. So the text amendment reads as follows, everything in black is the same, but pretty much is saying if no formal action has been taken, construction plans, middle permits, within two years, then the property shall undergo the following. Number one, revert to its previous zoning classification is something that was already there. It's just, I just added the bullets. So before it was all in a paragraph and I bulleted it out. Number one stays the same. Number two, the development administrator may initiate appropriate action to rezone the effective property to any other zoning classification. That's still the same. The only thing I added is within six months of the lost of vested rights. So pretty much I have the decision-making power to change it to whatever zoning after it reverts. Or number three, before the date of vested rights expiration, myself may approve vested rights for up to an additional two years, once, only once, due to delayed infrastructure improvements like sewer capacity. If substantial evidence and good cause shown can be proven. So a developer or whoever's building will have to show and prove to me.
That the sewers.
Yeah, they would have to do that. And that would be my discretion. And then number four, apply for a zoning vested rights approval based on seven point one dash three. That's not changed. That's the only thing that's really added is three. I have the original here just in case you wanted to peruse that as well. But we recommend approval. We've had several developments, like I said, Northeast Tool, Turkish Street, we've had Rayleigh Townhomes, all lose their zoning vested rights. And we have a few more conditional zoning properties that may lose their vested rights. They haven't touched their property. And this text amendment gives additional flexibility for vesting rights due to lack of infrastructure or unforeseen circumstances. There's been a lot of development pressure, but it, there's been a lot of infrastructure issues as well in the county. So you have any questions?
Number two.
Yeah, of course.
So does that give you your position, the authority to finalize a rezoning or to initiate the process to come before the board?
Yeah, so number two, I can already do. So what happens is if they lose their conditional zoning vested rights, it will revert back to its previous zoning classification. So think about a CZ reverting back to like, let's say residential. If I see within six months that it looks like it actually commercial fits best there, I at my sole discretion have the authority to change it back, change it to commercial. I've never done this before. So right now it kind of leaves it open-ended. I can do it for all conditional zonings. This one gives me six months to decide. I found it too open-ended for the previous text amendment. I think it gives, it's more appropriate to at least give me some sort of timeline or some property, some sort of timeline on other people making decisions for their property.
Now, if it was rezoned for commercial and they didn't do anything about it and during that time, property around that area was developed, say, got rezoned for residential. Do the residents that live there have any right to object to it continuing to be commercial?
So it'd have to be a conditional zoning for commercial. The residents at the time, I don't, once it loses its vesting rights, I don't believe the residents have many say that. I mean, they definitely can share their concerns, but I don't think they have any decision-making power.
No, but they could object and that affects your decision? Could it?
Well, they could also, they could file an appeal, which then goes through the quasi judicial process and you would meet about my decision. So yes, they could. So.
Gives them a little bit of power.
So for example, if someone doesn't like a decision I've made through my zone, my development administrator duties and powers of the ordinance, they can file appeal, pay the fee, apply for an application and goes to the Board of Adjustments, which you guys are having tonight, and then you make the final determination on the text.
So it's possible that a residential area around that parcel would not have to automatically stay, say a gas station.
It's possible. I would say, but it would have to be conditional zoning.
Yes.
So I just wanted to make sure that it wouldn't be like, let's say, just a regular piece of property doesn't get built out with, that stays how it is. It's, it would be case by case for conditional zoning.
Well, there's something.
There's multiple different routes. That's why it's hard to kind of answer that question. Sorry about that.
All right. Do I have a motion?
So you got, so you have, you would have, like in that case, if there was already something built and it was conditional zoning to change it to something else, but they never did anything with it and it, when it timed out, then you would have six months to either do something, like change it to what it would have been under the other conditional zoning. Does that make sense?
Yes, and I currently have that ability now. That's not new.
That's not new, but you have a, you have the six months that's new.
Yes.
So that would just give you six months to think about it and do something.
Mm-hmm.
But it's limited to the parcel that was vested.
Correct.
Yeah.
Correct. Yep. The only thing that's really is number three. I should have just showed you number three. I'm just kidding.
I just want to make sure, like he said, it's nice to be able, if you can do something. It's nice to have a time limit, I guess.
I, I agree. That's why I decided to add the time limit. I don't think I have unlimited amount of time to change someone's zoning. It doesn't seem right to me. I want it to go through the regular process eventually.
Make the motion to recommend approval of the request as presented. And by that, it's a consistent and reasonable.
I second that.
All in favor?
Okay, thank you.
Okay, number four. Denise and Vlad Putnik, Putchik, Pinchik. Pinchik.
I'll let you.
Request the text amendment to add coffee roastery as a listed use L in the vehicle service and repair VSR zoning district.
Good evening, board. I'm Stuart, the new planner. It's nice to meet you.
Hello, Stuart.
Yeah, so tonight the applicants are requesting a new use that is not currently in our use table. And this is for coffee roastery. They want that to be a listed use allowed by right in the vehicle service and repair district. Here on the map, this is going to be the dark blue in the middle. That is the only eight parcels zoned in town as VSR on Stallings Road. I'm sure we're familiar with that little section. And there's an aerial shot of that. So again, these are the only eight parcels in town that will be affected. And they're requesting this new use as a coffee roastery. We do recommend the approval of TX twenty-three dot zero-nine dot oh-four. We believe it is consistent with our town economic development plan. We believe this is going to be an opportunity to bring commercial growth to the town. We also believe that this is not going to interfere with VSR. VSR was intended to preserve the automotive industry inside of the town limits. And we think that the town has done that job of preserving our automotive industry and that allowing a new use is not going to interfere with that. Instead, it's just going to meet the needs of the community. We've seen, this is another text amendment, a text amendment just past council, last council meeting for a bakery of a similar sort. There's been flooring, medical supplies and some other things that have gone through VSR. So we believe VSR might be a little bit too restrictive for the area and we think that the community is requesting these text amendments. And so we're trying to provide some relief from what staff would believe and is an over-restrictive zoning district.
Where exactly on Stallings Road is it?
It's going to be about half a mile north of here. So if you turn left out of here and you go about half a mile, you'll see all the, there'll be the few car dealerships. And then this is where.
Pair of things.
They just repaved the, the, the unit, the last unit on the end. They just repaved, they resurfaced the parking lot.
Right before the.
I haven't been around.
Yeah, we could walk there and.
That block.
Yeah.
Oh, okay, because I haven't been around very well.
It's just that, that big block.
Yes. Yeah, it's just those eight parcels right there, yeah.
All they're doing is roasting.
Yes, so a coffee roastery would be, the primary purpose of the coffee roastery would be to produce coffee. And so a good example would be like a brewery, if you could imagine a brewery that does not serve alcohol, they only produce the alcohol there. They also have breweries that have a tap room. That would be a different use. So coffee roastery would need a coffee roastery with cafe use table. That would, that would be a different use.
Okay, thank you. Any questions? I will make a motion. To amend the text amendment to add vested rights extension for conditional zoning in Article five point four dash three I.
That's the previous one.
Oh, is it? I'm sorry. See?
Yeah.
Dennis and Vladimir Pinchuk request this text amendment to add a coffee roastery as a listed use in L in the vehicle service and repair zone, zoning district. All in favor? Yep, I gotta say that. I'm going to say that. Yeah, the putt. Up a little bit. Planning board thereby recommends the proposed text amendment is consistent and reasonable with the comprehensive land use plan. Blah, 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 blah. And planning board recommends approval to propose the amendment stated and the planning board finds terms zoning amendment is consistent and reasonable with the key guiding principles, goals, objectives of the comprehensive use plan.
Is that a motion?
Yes.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Yeah, that's good.
We got it. Okay, item five. TX twenty-three point zero-nine point zero-five. Dennis and Vladimir Putchik request a text amendment to add mentoring services, tutoring as listed in, a listed use L in the vehicle service and repair zoning district.
Yes, the applicants are requesting another new use to our table. This is not in our table currently to be allowed by right in VSR. Again, those are going to be the same eight parcels for the previous text amendment. So to save on some time, staff is going to recommend this one as well. Citing first that we do believe that VSR might be too restrictive for the needs of the community. And we do find that this use is consistent with our comprehensive land use plan as approved by council. And this is section three of our comprehensive land use plan titled Identity and Involvement. And the purpose is to create community culture that is supportive and demonstrated through community events and citizens participate, volunteer, cooperate for the greater good of the community. So we believe allowing something like tutoring and mentoring services is going to give the town and its citizenry the ability to participate in volunteering opportunities and creating a better community that creates this, again, section three, identity and involvement in the town of Stallings. Do I have any questions? This one is a little, the name is a little different.
I'd like to know what kind of mentoring services and what kind of tutoring is being, will be done, you know?
Specifically from the applicants. For, for, from us, we're not going to be able to say what can and can't be done as far as what the applicants are doing. Just, this is just a general tutoring and mentoring services. So if you could imagine anything from math tutoring towards Big Brother mentoring services, anything of that nature would qualify under tutoring or mentoring services. But applicants are. No applicants, I thought they were coming. Never mind, I thought the applicants were going to come tonight to talk about their specific business model. I know that they are looking to be involved in more of the mentoring services side, but we wanted to be able to add in the tutoring section to that as well.
Like onsite or would just be that this is where they're based and they go out into the community?
So we would use, the primary purpose of the, of the building is to do the mentoring or tutoring services. This is not an office space. We do have the ability to have office spaces, it's already listed in the use table. But this would be the onsite place where they're going to be doing the tutoring or certain.
The staff may recommend additional expansion of the VSR going forward?
Correct, we, we.
Is that a piecemeal or would be like a comprehensive?
Sure, so as of right now, we are, we're doing some testing to see what the needs of the community are going to be. We don't think right away that we should just do a massive rezoning of the parcels, the eight parcels. Instead, we would like to kind of go step by step to see what the community is asking for and to see what be, what would be successful there. So we don't want to completely rezone, add a bunch of things that are not going to want that space anyway. But instead, we want to kind of see public feedback to see who wants to locate there, who would use that, those eight parcels for their needs.
I forget what's over on the business park side, like are, there are some other areas in Stallings where we have vehicle repair areas.
Correct, we do allow for a vehicle repair in industrial. So there are other places in our ordinance that allow for that minor and major vehicle repair. But VSR was specifically designed to preserve those eight parcels and their ability to do what they were originally doing before our new ordinance.
Yeah, because they've been here a long time.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I got you.
What is the vacancy rate on those eight parcels?
I don't know that for certain, but I can say at least three are vacant because they've brought text amendments forward to fill them.
The way it's, the zoning is currently written, it's kind of restricting the usage of the, this is going to make it more accommodative.
Correct. The current zoning allows for major and minor automotive repair, automotive sales with no outside storage, which would kind of be difficult. And then flooring, medical sales and a bakery. So if you, if you have one of those, you can go to those.
I think if those are the results of previous.
Text amendments.
I move that we approve it as presented.
Your second?
Oh, and the. And also agreed that this is a reasonable and consistent as presented in the document.
There we go. Have a second?
A second.
All in favor? Hold it down. Two wide open. I don't know what they're going to teach.
I don't, I don't worry about that as much.
Okay. I'm, I'm ready. Oh, I see Max is ready already.
Oh, yeah.
Number seven, RZ twenty-three point one zero point zero-one. MMDI Incorporated. DBA Steel Point requests a general rezoning for 500 Union West Boulevard.
We have a text amendment before that. Sorry, we have a different text amendment before that item. Number, number six.
Oh, okay, I skipped. I'm boy outside, I'm rusty.
It's, it's okay.
Number six, TX twenty-three point one zero point zero-one. Staff requests a text amendment to amend outdoor storage acreage zoning requirements in Article ten point one dash thirty-six, outdoor storage.
Yeah, so it is a packed agenda tonight. This is the most packed agenda I've had since, for the last few years.
Waiting for me to come back.
I'm not, I guess I'm excited for the town council meeting for the day after we get back from Thanksgiving. We have all these items. So this is TX twenty-three ten zero-one. It's an amendment to outdoor storage. Outdoor storage is allowed with supplemental regulations in a variety of different zoning districts. It really depends, there's so many S ten point one dash three sixes in the to use table. The council has found that our outdoor storage text is too restrictive. And I researched it and I agree, but I only think it's really too restrictive in industrial. So I only added the red text. The main thing is ten point one dash three six C A, which means that you have to have five acres of storage if you're allowed to have outdoor storage with that ten point one dash three six in the use table. You have to have five acres to have outdoor storage unless now, if this passes, you're zoned industrial and consists of three acres. This allows it ten more parcels to have outdoor storage in town. And that is the only thing that's changing in this text amendment. And also council directed staff to write this, so. It increases the number of businesses for industrial zonings in Stallings. So we recommend approval. Any questions?
It's your turn.
I don't like the way some of that outdoor storage looks sometimes.
So they would still be required to have a perimeter fence and landscaping according to S ten point one dash three six. So if you look at the use table, for example, a landscaping business is allowed in industrial. And they, with this text amendment passes, they can have outdoor storage if they have a three-acre site, but they also have to add a fence and a five-foot perimeter buffer with landscaping. So it requires that on top of it. The only, the only issue with some of the land, the industrial park is that like, for example, the Union West Business Park, we have that bypass, it's like twenty-five feet in the air and you can see down and outdoor storage. That's like the only issue or thing in the town that's like, you can really tell that it's industrial and outdoor storage. But they would be allowed to do stuff like that if they had three acres. With this text amendment passing. Only in industrial.
I'm off that thing, I'm like, ah.
You're supposed to watch the road.
Can't help it.
It does only.
I want to get in there to organize it. I'm like, that just looks like a jumble, a mess. Just get me in there, please, just put a blanket over it.
It's only permitted in ten extra parcels in town. So this, if this, if this had passed, there's ten extra industrial three-acre sites.
I move to approve the text amendment to amend the outdoor storage acreage and zoning requirements in Article ten point one dash thirty-six, outdoor storage.
And the statement of consistency? Oh, there we go, I'll show it.
Planning board thereby, oh.
You can just read that we approve the statement of consistency based on.
Text amendment for Stallings Economic Development Plan will help increase the number of businesses in the zoning, industrial zoning in Stallings. All in favor? All opposed?
I, I, I'm in favor, I'll be in favor.
You don't have to.
You know, it's okay.
I didn't the last time.
Well, it's okay, I'll, I'll live with it because it's industrial.
All right, now we'll get to seven. R, RZ twenty-three point one, one zero point oh-one. MMD Incorporated, MMDI Incorporated. Steel Point request, Steel Point requests a general rezoning. The Steel Point requ- Steel Point requests the general rezoning of fifty, five hundred Union West Boulevard, PID number zero seven one zero two zero one zero R from US seventy-four commercial, C seventy-four to industrial IND. Mr. Max.
Thank you. So this is RZ twenty-three ten point zero one. Steel Points requesting a rezoning from C seventy-four to industrial on the parcel stated. Let me show you. I'm try- I know I'm like, uh, okay. Let me show you the parcel. I know I have a whole memo stated, but I, I think it might be easier just to kind of go over where the location is. So right when you get on the bypass to go towards Indian Trail, there is a parcel. Um, there's a business right here that is zoned C seventy-four. And it is in Union West Business Park. And Union West Business Park is all zoned industrial, as you can see in purple. So this applicant is requesting that this be turned back into purple industrial zoning. They want to do manufacturing in this business, but you're supposed to consider all industrial uses and, and this, on this property that if they were to walk away, could be any type of industrial use. But as you can see, it is an, in an industrial park. When you, uh, drive right by this property, it has Union West Business Park industrial, like a industrial sign, right when you drive in. So, um, I just kind of wanted to show you that for context.
Why wasn't that ever zoned industrial?
Yeah, so some history.
This one seventy-four went right past it back then, right?
Exactly.
So, yeah, let me see. It's.
I can zoom out. Let me just zoom out. Everything in color, like this colored is Stallings.
Okay, that's, yeah, and the, that's showing Stallings Road.
Oh, Stallings Road is this.
That's what I thought.
Right here.
So that's like, you have to get on that side road to get there.
And so you get on Richard Baker?
Yeah.
And then it dead ends. It used to be seventy-four, and that's why it's zone C seventy-four.
So it's kind of outdated zone?
It is an outdated zoning. I didn't keep the bypass in mind.
Go back out again.
Yeah, of course.
Okay, I'm looking. Where is it? Show me which one it is, which parcel from the, uh, that one?
Yep.
There, way far away from.
It's a, it's on like a dead-end street. Um, so everything in this like pink.
Bridge. Where do you go under, like, where's that other little road?
So this is the bridge. So this is like where you cross underneath Stallings Road. You go onto the bypass and it curves.
The other, like, when you're stopped.
Bridge is gone.
No, 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 no. No, I'm thinking the other way. I'm, I'm going, I need to go back. Okay, got it. Indian Trail. I was thinking in my mind, I was going the wrong way.
Yeah. So C seventy-four is a kind of an outdated zoning category, because most of C seventy-four doesn't front seventy-four anymore.
Right.
Um, and now a applicant has requested it be changed to industrial, back to, um, what it used to be in the pri- it used to be zone industrial prior to twenty eighteen as well. Um, and there are some land use and zoning differences, ma- mainly the size and requirements of industrial. But this site's already built out, as you can see. There's already a building there. So they're not going to build another large building on this. They might do it in, in addition, but, um, it really just depends on what applicant wants to do.
What do they build? What do they make?
Uh, so Steel Point produces trailers, but, uh, they would, they would want to use this building for manufacturing, which doesn't allow use in industrial. But industrial allows agricultural produ- production and convenience stores, general contractors, rescue station, personal training facilities, warehouses. You got to consider that as well when you're making your decision. But, um, oh, here, here's what it looks like.
Okay.
On the right street. And then, um, here's another aerial, more green, more summery aerial. And then here's the zoning. You can see pink is C seventy-four, purple's industrial. The future land use only shows it as NC DOT right-of-way, which, which means there's no future lanes category. And I think the reason is because they didn't know how the bypass was going to turn out. So this needs to be updated. The small area plan shows it as industrial. It's kind of, it's right here where my mouse is circling, if you can see my mouse. And that's all industrial. So staff recommends RZ twenty-three to ten. Um, although there's no identified future lanes for this area, it's consistent with the Mo- Row Expressway Small Area Plan for industrial. Any questions? Breweries are allowed in industrial, yeah.
Serves.
Yeah, I, I'd make a motion that we, um, approve this request. No, I, I could think. I just had to think. I haven't driven down that way in a long time. So I'm trying to think in my mind what it looks like. Um, and, um, also that it is reasonable and consistent with.
I'd say it's not consistent.
Or not.
Not consistent, but reasonable.
But it's reasonable, put it that way. Uh, with the.
Second? All in favor?
All right, good, great.
Okay, number eight, Planning Board Calendar. Oh, that's fun. Discuss and determine the twenty-four Planning Board Calendar. And that's Stuart.
We're back. Uh, this one is just going to be the dates for twenty twenty-four Planning Board. This year, there are no, everything is on a third Tuesday this year. Excuse me, twenty twenty-four. Everything will be on, uh, the third Tuesday of the month. I don't believe there will be any, uh, major holidays before, right before, right after. As you can see, November and December don't catch Thanksgiving or Christmas, unless you plan to take a MLK Day, uh, in January.
Do I have a motion?
I move that we approve the, uh, item as presented?
A second.
And, well, this is, this is.
It's a statement of consistency, reasonable. That's, it's reasonable. All in favor? Okay. Join this meeting. Do I have a motion?
I make a motion we adjourn this meeting.
Second? All in favor?